This time, I'd like to call to order the September 14, 2011 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that Commissioners Howard Dalton and Susanna Zerizua-Gradyen are absent. All of the Commissioners are present. So I will move along to the approval or denial of the September 14, 2011 proposed agenda.
Motion.
Second.
A motion by Milton Clouat, seconded by Julio Dumas to approve the agenda. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item four on the agenda, approval or denial of the minutes of the August 10, 2011 Planning Commission meeting.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Milton Clouat, seconded by Julio Dumas. Is there any opposition or discussion? Motion passes. Item five, public comment period. This time, anyone wishing to come up and address the Commission on any item that pertains to the Planning Commission, may come up, sign in with the Secretary, or in this case, I think Mr. Compton still has the list of him with the Plan Director, and you will get you three minutes to address the Commission.
The pre-development discussion of the Hummus House project has been on the agenda for the past three months. When the item was pulled in July, I made a public records request for the postponement letter from the applicant. One sentence caught my attention. It appears that my application is being treated differently, and I don't know why. The planning process must be predictable and the codes applied consistently if we want to build trust and grow our parish. In an effort to understand why the applicant felt he had been treated differently, I made a second request for emails related to Hummus House and a similar project at Bokage Plantation. Not one email was found related to Bokage, but there were several related to Hummus House project. The following 11 slides have a story to tell. I would like to place them in the public record.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on, Mr. Dumas. Which slides, Ms. Gopfert?
I have some slides here on this little thing here.
Okay. You're talking about a PowerPoint presentation?
It's just slides. Yeah.
Okay. Well, you've got your, okay, you've got your three minutes.
Right. There's other people that are going to come after me.
Mr. Chairman, before she proceeds, I mean, this is a matter that's before us tonight. I mean, should this not be dealt at that time, number one?
The matter before us tonight, Mr. Dumas, is simply whether or not we're going to approve the application in order to rehear this next month.
Okay. Well, I would like to ask there a couple of questions in regards to this PowerPoint presentation, if I may then.
Well, really, you know, the public comment period is not a question-and-answer session. Technically, the public's not supposed to be asking us questions, they're simply supposed to be commenting, and technically, and we don't always adhere to it strictly because we try to work this, you know, try and be as accommodating to the public as possible, so.
If you would, if you could indulge me, just a couple of questions, I'd appreciate it.
All right. Just a couple of questions, Mr. Dumas.
So Catherine, let me understand this. You requested this thing and you generated this PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
You generated?
Yes.
Okay. I would respectfully ask that the staff put up the property so this file real quick on the screen so we can determine exactly, you know, how it was prepared and generated. And I'd like to ask AP-TV how this PowerPoint presentation was delivered to staff.
How it was delivered, in what regards? I mean, we've had PowerPoint presentations delivered before, which has been no problem.
Who made the delivery to the staff and to the, to AP-TV? How was, I mean, who delivered it? How did it arrive there? Who made the request that it be here tonight?
Mr. Compton, do you have an answer to that question?
I was informed that Commissioner Dan Satterley and Commissioner Milton Clouat met with the AP-TV group to deliver this presentation.
That's right.
And I'd like to see the property so the file real quick, Rick, if you don't mind.
Well, Mr. Dumas, what does all this have to do with the, what do the properties have to do with it? Why? What is the purpose of this?
Well, if these two Commissioners recused themselves the first go-around and they prepared this presentation for Catherine Gopfert to come here and argue, and I'm concerned of the propriety of it. I don't think this is proper. I think it's improper, and it's, and it's setting the stage, you know, again, like we did last month, you know, to influence the rest of the Commission in one way or the other on this matter. Can I please see the properties, Rick?
Mr. Marshon? These are public records requests only, Mr. Dumas. That's all they are.
I understand that, but you stated you prepared the presentation.
Yes.
And I think the properties of this file will show differently. Rick, could you please?
It's hard to read. Under author, it says Dan Satterley, and under company, it says Department of Animal Sciences, LSHAC.
Thank you.
That's right.
So you didn't prepare it?
It wasn't prepared on my computer, sir, but I worked on the presentation, yes.
Okay, but you stated that you prepared it.
That's not what you asked me.
I asked you if you prepared the presentation.
Let's not discuss that, Mr. Dumas. Let's look at the slides.
Mr. Dumas, out of order. Mr. Dumas, this was a couple of questions. You've made your point.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The PowerPoint presentation has been prepared on Commissioner Satterley's computer, correct? But it was done with residents? Or was it prepared on your computer, or did you view it?
I don't think the entire document was prepared on my computer. It was on multiple computers. The last file may have shown it was on my computer, but, Mr. Chairman, I think the relevancy here is that the information presented on public records obtained, as I think Ms. Gopfert said, by public record request of AP.gov.us participants, and I think the public has a right to see those records, personally.
I don't have a problem with the public seeing the documents. I have an issue with how it's being presented and the inaccuracy in the representations that are being made.
Mr. Marshon?
Ms. Gopfert.
Yeah. I really want Mr. Kelly to be treated the same as all other applicants, and if he was treated differently, I wanted to find out. And the Hummus House project is an excellent project, there's no question about that, but the events and the circumstances surrounding the admission of the application letter, we need to look at these emails and see what happened. It really is critical to understanding why he felt he was treated differently.
I was given this stack of emails. I'm assuming, I don't know.
That they were put in the public record.
Because I haven't seen this PowerPoint presentation, but if these are the emails that are in the PowerPoint presentation.
That's right.
Then these were, as a matter of public document. Now, okay, then, Mr. Dumas, if they don't show it, then the emails will be...
No, I said they show. I just wanted to make sure that they were shown in their, that they were shown in an accurate representation of the source and how it was prepared.
Okay.
And that not by someone who's claiming authorship of something that they did not author.
Fair enough.
I may not have, it may not have been on my computer, Mr. Dumas, but I did help author it, because I made the public records request and I looked through the emails.
I stand by my initial question to you. Let's move on.
Okay.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Gopfert.
We see here in this slide, we have Mr. Kelly at his work, sending an email to Beth James at her work about 6:19 on July 12. The subject line has nothing in it. It says, "Here it is. Please let me know who to address it to, the addresses and the AC repairman name and the chicken doctor name. Make any changes you like." This complaint letter was not on Hummus House Stationery when it was sent in this email. The applicant seeks guidance as to whom to directly send the letter and who to copy the addresses to. The applicant could not remember the names of the two Commissioners. The email does give somewhat of a disrespectful image of the two Commissioners. I can't get this thing to work. The next slide is from Ms. James at Work. She sends the letter to her home a few minutes later on July 12. This is the day before the Commission meeting in July, on the 13th. It is forwarded to her home. We note that the attachments of Ascension Planning Commission postponement dot DOCX, and this is the actual complaint letter. It suggests, I do not know, but that she intended to edit it at home to satisfy the applicant's request.
My name is Greg DePlessis, and for the record, I want to first state, it neither pleases me nor am I comfortable with coming before you in this matter, and I understand Mr. Dumas' concerns. This is unlike any I've come to you before in, but events and activities of the past few weeks of this pending multimillion-dollar project that we've already been before you once and stated, we're all in favor of the project. It's a good project. We have serious concerns about not only the putt overlay situation, but now there are also other zoning issues that have surfaced that troubles me and concerns me greatly, and I hope as this story unfolds, it will compel this Commission to at least slow down the fast-track approval of this proposed project long enough that you would be willing to ask what I believe are very serious questions that absolutely need to be asked and then So in continuing the story on this next slide, if I could have it up there, it appears that at some point... Okay, I'm not sure if we'd gone over, but Ms. Beth James had forwarded the letter sometime close to midnight to our parish president, and at some point after that, it appears that our Planning Director was dispatched to the DPW complex where he proceeded to scan the original letter. That had previously, by now it looks like, been edited at least once, and he scanned it and got it placed on the Hummus House Stationery. Having gotten that done, he at this time sends it to himself at home. And at this point, he, it appears he continued to edit it till finally, having succeeded in that, he sends it out from his parish email to all nine of you Commissioners who should have gotten the now revised Hummus House complaint letter, and he copies President Martinez and Ms. Beth James. His opening sentence leaves one to believe that he himself had just received the letter this morning, and that's not what the documentation indicates. As you can see, he received it this morning.
Time, Mr.?
So you can see, there are multiple editings to the point that unless I've completely misunderstood what occurred, it seems the Planning Director is not only the recipient, he is the editor and finally, the publisher of this same document. I'm not sure what's going on with all this working through the night, but the questions need to be asked. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. DePlessis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Members of the Commission. I'd first like to start off by saying, I don't have a problem with Mr. Kelly's project. That's not my issue tonight. However, I do have an issue with the parish president's staff misleading Mr. Kelly, in my opinion, and also misleading the Members of this Commission. There's going to be some information given to you all in a few minutes on this slide that came as surprise and upsetting to me that you didn't receive a complete package, but yet you were expected to do your job and make a decision on what was before you. The parish president's office says they operate with integrity and transparency. I questioned the integrity after seeing this information, and as far as the transparency, it put a big question mark in my mind also. So as the story continues, you'll see right here is the, is the middle of the letter. This letter was edited by Mr. Crumpton for Mr. Kelly, and you'll see in here, I thought it was rather disrespectful how we talked about integrity to a couple of Members of the Commission when they got referred to as an air-conditioned repairman and a chicken doctor on a July 12 letter. But I guess I do have to cut Mr. Crumpton a little bit of slack because he was doing this at 3:00 in the morning. Okay? If you'll see up here, highlighted in green is some suspect wording, and you'll see the first sentence that he put where he refers to himself in second instead of third party on that. Had Mr. Kelly been sending this letter to Mr. Crumpton, he'd have mentioned Lance Brock and you instead of Mr. Crumpton, as he did in this instance. So I've kind of have an issue with that. In the next slide, you'll see where the stuff that's highlighted in red is text that Mr. Compton modified himself, and you'll see where he added text and the letter was modified. So this thing was continuously sent back and forth and modified as a complaint letter from Mr. Kelly.
30 seconds.
I guess in closing, I was waiting for the parish to get involved to try to help the Commission and supply you all with the proper documentation to make an intelligent decision on this. This is not what I was expecting to see when I saw these public records or these emails back and forth. It caused me to question the integrity and the transparency that I hear from my parish president's office. Thank you all.
My name's Patty Boudreau, and first, I want to start off by saying, I'm really not comfortable with being up here, especially seeing what I'm about to say. I'm really embarrassed to feel that you all are really put in this situation, and, but what's good for the goose is good for the gander. I'm going to start off by saying, mine starts with the letter from Mike Marshon at home. You got it? Okay. Yeah, they hit go on ahead. Sending an email to Tommy Martinez and Lindsay Mandos. Tommy Martinez at her, at work, and Lindsay Manda at home. And the subject is scanned from Xerox Work Center. Tommy and Lindsay, there are serious accusations made against two Commissioners and the full Commission. Tommy, your staff is involved. This issue will be resolved. Lindsay, you and I will be discussing this before the meeting tonight. Michael Marshon. Now, that was on July 13 at 11:28. July 13 at 3:34, same day, Tommy Martinez's work to Michael Marshon and Lindsay Manda's home. Subject, same thing scanned from the Xerox Work Center. These certainly are serious allegations, and hopefully, it can be resolved in a timely manner. My staff only gave recommendations which you can accept or reject. Same day, at 4:31, from Mike to Tommy at work and Lindsay. Mr. Martinez, wrong answer. I'm ashamed at this time to say I'm even from Ascension Parish. Thank you.
Ricky, did anyone else sign up to speak during this, this public comment period?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Joan Patterson. Dr. Marian Rendell sent me tonight to read a letter for him on his behalf. He's unable to be here.
Yes, ma'am.
Ladies and gentlemen, as the owner of Bokage Plantation, I am writing this letter in support of the exemption of historic sites from the PUD, SPUD, TND overlay as proposed in the new section 172038. I apologize that work responsibilities prevent me from addressing the Council in person. I purchased Bokage in January of 2008 when it was in deplorable condition. The plantation has been lovingly restored and is now being preserved to share her grace and beauty with the citizens of this parish, this state, and with visitors from around the nation and the world. We currently operate as a five-bedroom bed and breakfast. We offer tours and host small weddings and events. However, our work at Bokage is not complete. Planning and zoning has approved a 6,000-square-foot wedding venue, and we are planning a 3,000-square-foot chapel. The planned and now-approved development does not help Bokage alone. At a time of high unemployment, unemployment, and in the midst of an economic crisis, the citizens of Ascension Parish will have jobs in the construction of the facilities as well as the sale of materials and supplies. Upon completion, folks who live here will have jobs in food service catering, sound and acoustics, and many other services involved in the staging and production of events, both large and small. While the economic benefits to the citizens of our parish are important, so too are the aesthetics of any development. The chapel of Bokage, for example, is envisioned not only as a sacred place for sacred vows, but also as a refuge for solace and comfort for weary travelers as well as those who live here. As I write this letter, I reflect on what politicians on both sides of the aisle, Democrats and Republicans alike, are now saying about the prescription to solve our economic crisis. They all agree that government regulations are choking off business development. They all agree that government needs to let our economy grow again. By exempting historic sites from the PUD, SPUD, TND overlay, our parish government will facilitate, not hinder, the economic and aesthetic growth of our parish. I respectfully ask that you vote in favor of the amendment to add the historic site exemption. Sincerely, Dr. Marian Miller, Rendell owner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Tony Lawson. I'm a member of the Tourism Commission. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Kelly. We've looked at the projects that he has planned. It's certainly your choice, but I'd like to put forth that the Tourism Commission operates off of hotel-motel tax. The impact of adding the items that Mr. Kelly wants to add will increase income to the parish, to the Tourism Commission, to the hotel-motel budget, to a variety of sales tax. It'll create jobs for the parish, and whatever email misspellings or misunderstandings seem quite incidental in comparison to the overall impact of the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is it?
It's lunch for eight. That's it.
Okay. All right. Then the initial public comment period is closed. Moving along, item six, 6A, the Luella Dagel Estate lots Z2A and Z2B.
Good evening. Stuff seems so insignificant now. Clint Quetmott, D.J. Quetmott.
Not to your clients.
Not to my clients. You are correct. Asking for the family partition of the estate of Luella Dagel property.
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Clouat.
Clint, they mentioned something about the barn that's in the 20-foot rear setback line. Is that the barn in which the parish is saying needs to be torn down?
What we're asking, what we're asking for tonight is approval upon the condition of the Board of Adjustments approving that barn remain within that 20-foot setback. We are on the agenda for the meeting on the 27th, and so we would like approval upon that condition. The barn is a couple feet into the line, and so we're already signed up for that.
Can you tell me approximately how much of that building is in that setback line?
It's roughly about three feet.
How much?
About three feet.
Three feet?
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? Not them. We'll open up the public comment period on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and address the Commission on this item, please come up, sign in, and you will get you three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak. All right. Public comments closed on this item. Comments or questions from Commissioners? No comments or questions. What's the wish of the Commission?
I make a motion to approve, subject to the conditions of approval stated in the staff report.
I have a motion to approve contingent on staff recommendations by Julio Dumas. Seconded by Steve Barrow. No discussion, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Clouat?
Yes.
Mr. Satterley?
Yes.
Mr. Estnard?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 6B, the Ronald J. Parr property, lots RJP-1-A-1, RJP-1-A-2, and RJP-1-A-3.
Yes, this is, this is a plaque that was presented to you before. It is, its 90 days has expired, so it's being presented to you again. It's being presented to you with the same, asking for the same variance as I requested the time before. And the biggest, of course, is being the T-turnaround request for the variance for that.
Comments or questions from Commissioners? No comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, Clint, you said this is the same package or the same thing that came to us before, right?
Yes.
And the only reason you're back here is the fact that it expired. Time limit expired.
Correct. We did receive approval, but with the conditions of the T-turnaround, but we are asking, me and my client are asking for the approval with the variance for the T-turn due to the pond and the overall encumbrances of the T-turnaround per the regulations.
Do you have in your possession showing the T-turnaround on a bigger scale than what we have here?
I did. I did sketch it out in case the client would want that option, and after seeing the encumbrance, I can put it up on the screen here if you would like to see it.
Would you please?
Am I doing this right? This is the actual stoppage of the first of what's proposed. This is the actual L-turn due to the pond. There's no acceptance. It's the distance of half of 110, which is the requirement of 110 by 40 on a T-turn, and this overall encumbrance, including the 25-foot setback, is 7,389 square feet of encumbrance. The one-acre lot that Nicole would be getting, the actual usable area of a one-acre lot, which is 43,560 square feet, would be reduced to 21,902 square feet. So it's a tremendous encumbrance, although...
Well, wait a minute. The math doesn't work. You've got 700 square feet.
7,000. Seven thousand.
Seven thousand from forty-three thousand doesn't end up with twenty-one thousand. So the, the turnaround doesn't, does, is not responsible for the pond. The pond takes up a substantial amount of area, too.
And so, so does the rear and side setback. Yes, all of those considered in the encumbrances, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadley.
Mr. Quentmau, the staff review comments talks about the turnaround at the end of Anna Lane. Is that the same as Lucian Lane?
I didn't know we had a discrepancy in the names.
Mr. Chairman.
At the, it is a typo. When we use Lucian Lane for the first time and then for, for whatever reason, it was a typo at the very end of that, so yes, it is Lucian Lane.
I, I was just asking because when I visited a property, I, I didn't see any Anna Lane, I saw Lucian.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? If not, then we'll open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in, you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak, public comment period on this item is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clouat.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve granting the variance on the T-turnaround.
I have a motion to approve, uh, grant, and also granting a variance on the T-turnaround by Milton Clouat.
Second.
Seconded by Bob Nance. Discussion.
I'm, I think we should, you know, I'm prepared to, to support the previous approval and restart the clock on it, but I, I don't, I mean, I think that the T-turnaround was there in the first go-around, so I, you know, I would prefer that that turnaround be in place. There's no, there's no evidence that, that is justifiable for the variance.
Any further discussion? If not, then we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Barrow.
No.
Mr. Dumas.
No.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Clouat.
Yes.
Mr. Sadley.
Yes.
Mr. Essnar.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, all. You have a good evening.
Item six C, the William P. Delon Property Tracks B dash one, B dash two, and B dash
Hello, my name is Liz Delon Meir. I'm representing the Delon Partnership. The partnership wishes to give two acres of land to my daughters, Joel Meir and Jessie Weber. The land that we want to give them adjoins my acre.
Comments or questions from commissioners? No comments or questions from commissioners, then we'll open up the public comment period on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to speak, public comment period on this item is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Clouat.
That's the one, when I visit the site, it has a trail and a, and a, it has, it has, you have your trail that was just being installed, but it has a garage or a carport on the side of it, and you sit, and you're saying, you're saying that you're going to use the right of passage. Is that on the, how close is that to that, to that carport?
The carport that already exists?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not the same drive.
You're, you're putting a new drive to the, to the right of that.
Correct.
That's on the other side of these, it has a long strip of woods next to the carport, The Long Property, that's the one.
It doesn't have a long strip of woods.
Were you just installing, you just had a trail that just was put on there, right?
Correct.
Okay, the carport, it has an old, an old building, an old home in the back of it that looks like just put there.
No, the old building's been there since nineteen eighty.
Well, I'm sorry, it's been refurbished or whatever, with the foundation, new pillars and stuff it looks like. Where does this line pass in relation to the trail in that, in that, in that home?
I, I'm not, I'm not with you.
Is that home in, if I may, Commissioner, is that home in lot B two or lot B one?
My acre has the old house and the trailer. The acre we want to give my two daughters.
Is in the back of it.
Adjoins to the side and the back.
So you're, you're in the front in lot B one, and you want to give her lot B two?
I'm B. I'm track B.
And you want to give her lot B one?
B one and B two.
And that's the lot with the trail and the, the old home on it?
No, that's mine.
That's track B.
Okay, it's to the right of that, then.
The acres that we want to give. The acres that we want to give have nothing on them.
Okay, I know, I see what you're doing now. I was very mis, I was very confused when we went out there. I see what you're doing. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I got a question.
Okay, Mr. Nance.
I have a question for Jeff, Jeffrey.
What you got?
On number two, you said it's, oh, it's partially addressed, partially addressed on track B three. Has that been completed?
In, in the comment section, the setbacks are just listed as twenty-five feet. It just needs to be updated. It, it's shown correctly on the plat, the comment section just needs to be updated.
All right, this time we'll open up the public comment period on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this item, please come up, sign in, you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to address the commission, the public comment period on this item is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners? No comments or questions from commissioners, what's the wish of the commission?
I move to approve as written.
I have a motion to approve. You're taking into the consideration the, the staff comments?
Right.
Okay, contingent on staff comments.
Well, he said they were, it was cleared.
Okay, well, um, by Bob Nance, seconded by Julio Dumas. No discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Barrow.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Clouat.
Yes.
Mr. Sadley.
Yes.
Mr. Essnar.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item seven, public hearing to approve or deny the following private minor subdivision preliminary plat, seven A, the Burns Property dash M D LLC lots two dash A dash one and two dash A dash two.
Good afternoon, my name's Brian Aguilar. We're here to ask for preliminary plat approval of track two A one and two A two.
Comments or questions from commissioners? No comments or questions from commissioners, we'll open up the public hearing on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission, please sign in, you'll get your three minutes to speak. No one wishing to address the commission, the public comment period on this item is closed. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Essnar.
They state, Mr. Ward's letter in here states that they have not taken the course to satisfy the three items that he has listed in that letter. Or is that necessary for the preliminary approval?
Well, Mr. Ward wrote the letter, and let's give him the opportunity to give us, give us some input on that.
He's not close to a mic, so I'm going to attempt to, to speak for him unless I'm, unless I misspeak, then let me know. But for the most part, um, this is just going as the preliminary plat, and so they, the, the road itself has already been constructed, but it doesn't really need to be constructed for the preliminary plat, that's for the final plat. So they've, they've listed some of the concerns that need to be addressed prior to the final plat, and they've included in the package just for, just for reference purposes, but for the preliminary plat, for the purpose of the preliminary plat, it doesn't need to be completed until, until they move into the final plat stage, which you, which you will also hear and also have to approve.
So these are items that we know that the engineering is going to be looking for to be resolved by the time this comes back with the, with the final plat?
Correct, correct.
All right. Any other comments or questions from commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
I want to make a motion to approve subject to staff complying with both items number one and two of the staff report.
Second. I have a motion to approve with condition by Julio Dumas, seconded by Milton Clouat. No discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Barrow.
Yes.
Mr. Dumas.
Yes.
Mr. Nance.
Yes.
Mr. Clouat.
Yes.
Mr. Sadley.
Yes.
Mr. Essnar.
Yes.
Motion passes. Item eight, public hearing to approve or deny the following of, appeal of decision application. Eight A, the pre-development meeting for historical site overlay zone site plan for Homeless House Plantation and Gardens.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Sadley.
In order to save time and to honor requests made to me by Commissioner Clouat, I, I wish to make a joint statement on behalf of entrance into the public record. While he, while we have been cleared of all wrongdoing by separate and joint investigations of the Ascension Parish Sheriff Office and the District Attorney, and despite our attorney's opinion that it would be entirely appropriate and ethical for us to sit in judgment of item number eight on today's agenda, in lieu of the accusations made by the applicant in his letter of July twelfth and his subsequent untoward comments made against us that were quoted in the media to remove any further doubt that we in any way acted or may yet act inappropriately, as we did the last time that this pre-development plan came before the planning commission, we wish to once again recuse ourselves from all impending discussions and actions related to the applicant's present application for a public hearing to approve or deny appeal of the commission's decision last month to deny his project. Again, we will leave this meeting chamber and retire to our conference room to avoid any concerns that body language could also be an issue. Mr. Chairman, please call us back when all activities related to item eight have been completed. I thank you very much. Mr. Clouat, have I adequately covered your feelings and wishes, wishes on this matter as well? Chairman, I mean, Commissioner Sadley, yes, sir. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to enter these documents into the record, public record in the minutes, in the minutes of this meeting.
Please go ahead, sir.
Mr. Marshawn, my name is Ryan Johnson. I'm a lawyer in Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and I represent Kevin Kelly and in regard to the Homeless House project, which is item number eight on the agenda today, and Mr. Kelly has asked that I speak on his behalf. The purpose of my remarks and what we understand item eight to be is an appeal of a decision that was made by this commission on August eighth, excuse me, August tenth regarding a conditional approval request by Mr. Kelly as to his project. Before I begin my remarks, and I will keep them brief, Mr. Chairman, I have here a written document, which is a letter from me with some attachments labeled Exhibits One and Two, that I'd like to enter into the public record, which more fully explain the comments that I'm going to make here before the commission, and would ask that they be entered into the public record here.
That's fine, go ahead.
I'm happy to provide the commission with copies if you'd like them now.
Yes, go ahead.
Multiple copies of those. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, it is our position that the project and the proposals, the conditional approval requested by Mr. Kelly are both appropriate and legally sound, and we believe that the commission, with all due respect, made a mistake in August when it decided not to approve the conditional request by Mr. Kelly. I'd point out before I start into the merits of this that we heard tonight, other items on your agenda were conditionally approved, so the concept of a conditional approval is certainly one that the commission understands and, and uses on a frequent basis when it's necessary. And that is, of course, the context of what we are asking for is simply a conditional approval conditioned on some other events, which I'll talk about in a second. There are a number of reasons why this appeal is appropriate and why the commission should reverse its decision, and I'll go through each of them in some level of depth, although as I pointed out in the letter that I've delivered to you, we explain it much more fully. The first reason is that when you focus on what the commission did in August, its decision, as we understand it, was to say that the conditional approval should not be made because of the PUD overlay ordinance and the requirements that apply, and that the project as proposed was not consistent with that set of ordinances in, in the parish zoning rules. As Mr. Kelly, I think, pointed out when he was here before, and we point out again, the PUD ordinance simply does not apply here and should not apply to a historic site such as the Homeless House Plantation. When you look at what the PUD ordinance talks about and why it was enacted, the legislative intent, for lack of a better word, of why it was put in place, it was intended to deal with new developments, both residential and commercial developments, and to encourage smart growth as a part of moving forward in the parish and developing new projects. Certainly was not, when you read it, intended to apply to a historic site like Homeless House. So for that reason and, and no other, it, it's our view that the commission should change its decision because the PUD, the PUD ordinance should not apply. But even if you do apply it, and I'll just assume for sake of discussion here that it does apply, what we're asking for, and go back to my first point, is a conditional approval. It's our understanding, certainly we don't know what's going to happen, but it's our understanding that tomorrow night, the full council of the parish is set to consider a potential repeal of the PUD ordinance. Certainly that hasn't happened, I acknowledge that as we sit here tonight, but we believe, and we don't know, but we believe it's likely to happen. So what we're asking for, and what we asked for before, was a conditional approval conditioned on that being taken away. Now, of course, if it doesn't happen, it doesn't get repealed, then that's a different issue, and I'll talk about in a few minutes why it really shouldn't matter and you ought to reverse your decision anyway. But simply that is what we're asking for. If, you know, if, if you look at, you go beyond that and you look at, in just a matter of fundamental fairness, and I started out by pointing out, I think, that this project as proposed is both legal and it's, it's the fair and right thing to do to approve it. What we ask is that you look at what the commission has done previously with similarly situated properties and proposals, including, and I point this out in my letter, one of the prime examples, I think, is what was done with the Bokage property, the Bokage Plantation, which is incidentally right down the road from the Homeless House property, and arguably, arguably, and I'm, I'm not speaking for them, that, you know, the, the commission could have applied the PUD, same PUD ordinance that we're dealing with here to the Bokage property when a proposal came before this commission in January of this year. And based on what we understand, and in fact, the minutes of this commission's meeting in January, that was not the analysis. The PUD requirements were not considered, and the project that was proposed by Bokage was approved unanimously by the commission. So my point there is to say, and, and I know you know this... So, my point there is to say, and I know you know this and y'all hear this on a regular basis, but the process, in fact, we heard this in a public comment earlier this afternoon, is the process needs to be applied evenly and fairly to everyone. And so, what I'm suggesting is, when you have a similarly situated property like Bocage that's not made subject to this PUD overlay and the requirements, you ought to treat a similar project like the Homeless House the same. And best we can tell, looking at the minutes, what was considered in January as to Bocage was, did the project comply with the historic overlay rules and requirements? Apparently, the commission found that it did, and it approved the project, and we'll talk about the historic overlay in a second. My point simply is, you have to treat everybody the same, and you should treat everyone the same. And I'm not going to, you know, y'all all know the buzzwords, what a commission, the standard that a commission is held to, it's not supposed to be arbitrary and capricious in its decisions. One of the ways that we look at that is, is everybody treated the same all the time? And in fact, one of the public speakers, I think, the first one that we heard tonight, said, "We have to treat everybody the same." We agree with that, and that's all we're asking for, very simply. The project and the proposal that was presented in August and now is here on appeal to you does fit within the historic overlay, and in fact, the Homeless House, I mean, there's not any more, any property in this parish that's more historic, I don't think, than Ascension, than the Homeless House, or certainly it's in the top few. And that is exactly, when you look at the historic overlay, that is the right set of rules to apply here, and it is consistent with the use that that historic overlay set of rules deals with. And so, I'll just leave it at that. I mean, that historic overlay, it's very clear what that zoning condition deals with. And let me just stop here and point out, I mean, to the extent that there's any confusion or discussion about whether the PUD applies or the historic overlay applies, I don't think there should be any, because I think it's pretty clear that it ought to apply. It's our understanding that the way that gets resolved is, there's a provision in the zoning code in the early sections that talks about interpretation of the zoning rules, and it's my understanding that that's a decision that the zoning official, which is a defined term in a person on the parish council staff, or excuse me, on the commission's staff, who makes that decision. And so, I mean, I don't know what the decision would be as to this particular interpretation, but previously, I believe that Homeless House has been approved for projects using the historic overlay, and I would, I think that implicitly recognizes that there has been a recognition that that is the right set of rules, and we certainly have dealt with the parish zoning official on that process. And so, I mean, I think that's further support for the fact that the historic overlay is the one that ought to apply. It has been suggested, and I don't know whether it's going to be addressed or brought up here, but since I have this time with the commission, I might as well address it now, that somehow there's yet another set of rules that ought to be applied, which is yet another zoning district, a conservation district, which is also provided for in the zoning rules. Very similar to my arguments on why the PUD shouldn't apply, the conservation district should not apply here and should not be applied as a part of your decision process. And certainly, the conservation district was not part of the analysis that went into the decision that you made in August, as best as we can tell. The whole discussion was about the PUD and whether that was consistent. So, I mean, I'm walking a little bit down the path myself that I don't know that you're going to go down, but I want to address it in terms of this conservation district, because it should not apply either. When you look at the legislative intent, and for lack of a better word, and the reasons why conservation districts are in place, it's to preserve rural areas of the parish. It doesn't have anything to do with this kind of property, historic site. And what you do is, if you look at the conservation district and the historic overlay, and you put them next to each other, the overlay clearly is a more specific, on-point set of zoning rules that apply, and that's the reason, as y'all know this, this is why you have overlay districts in the first place, to take what you have as big, large sections of the parish and narrow down to deal with very specific areas and specific issues that need your special attention or need the code's special attention in terms of zoning requirements. That's what the historic overlay does, and that is what you ought to apply. The conservation district should not apply here. And let me suggest to you this, if the conservation district were to be applied here and the commission decided to go down that path, I think it's a path that you don't want to go down, because there are a number, as we understand, a number of other properties and facilities and commercial operations that are going on in other parts of the parish that are likewise in a conservation district, because if you look at your zoning map, it's on your website, it looks like it, I don't know the math, but it looks like it covers maybe a third of the parish in terms of the geography. There are a number of other properties, including, for example, Bocage, that might be in that zoning characterization, and if you apply it, I think you're going to have a lot of unintended consequences, you're going to have people who all of a sudden are in uses that are not permitted under the conservation restriction. And I don't think you want to open that Pandora's box for any number of reasons. I would point out simply, and I think I need to respond to the PowerPoint briefly that we saw and that the public records that were presented to the commission, my simple point on that is, I really don't see what that has to do with any of the narrow issues that are before you right now, which is the conditional approval and the appeal related to that, and what that requires you to do is to focus on what the rules say and how are they applied here. Those other things, I mean, the public records and the emails are what they are. Now, I'd point out that those, what you saw were not exactly the public records, because what you saw were the emails and then a number of annotations in the PowerPoints, unclear where the PowerPoint came from, really doesn't matter for this purpose, because it really shouldn't distract the commission from what its task is here, and I would suggest to you that you shouldn't consider that as a part of your decision process. You need to keep your eyes on what, on the prize, what are the rules, and, you know, which set of rules apply and how do you apply them here? I would end by thanking the commission for the opportunity to speak here. We respectfully request that you reverse the decision that you made in August, you grant a conditional approval of this project, it's the right thing to do for the parish. You heard, in fact, I think, I counted two or three different people who said, who, although I think they were generally opposed to this, started by saying, "We're really in, excuse me, in favor of this project," and then went on to talk about the emails. Listen to that, that people are in favor of this. Homeless House is a great property, it is an economic engine in the parish, is very important, and we believe that it ought to be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions from commissioners?
Oh, I do have a couple of comments. Start off with the approval of Bocage. We approve that on a recommendation from the staff, and I'll read what they said. "The staff recommends approval as all requirements of the land development code have been met." I am a volunteer, I don't get paid, and I depend on the staff to do the research. They did the research, and they said all the LDC requirements have been met, and that's what I voted on when I voted for Bocage. Had I known there was a PUD overlay, I don't know, probably would have gone through the same process of trying to get the PUD overlay ordinance repealed. And you also mentioned about some things that Homeless House has done in the past. All these changes came about in 2009, so the good changes they made were done before 2009, and I am not against your project, but I also don't want to approve it and be violating ordinance at the same time. You know, I don't have a problem with the project, but I don't, I've got two conflicting laws, and we've got a problem there. And you say, "Well, you know, look at it narrowly." That's true. I looked at it narrowly, and I can see, you know, I'm getting ready to violate a law, and somebody might sue me over that, and if I violated your direction, you know, somebody else might sue me. I don't want to get sued, so I'm going to try to uphold the law as written, and it is very poorly written, and I'll be the first to admit that. Hopefully, the council will remove that real soon. And that's about all I can say about the project, you know, I don't have a problem with it. We did not show favoritism toward Bocage because we took staff recommendations, and I can only go on their recommendation, they came back when Homeless House, and they, someone had discovered that there were problems, and they were actually problems with Bocage too, but I didn't know about it. I was going strictly off their written word, so I was not arbitrary or capricious about that when I made the motion last time to deny it.
Mr. Marshon, could I respond very briefly to that, if that's appropriate?
Very briefly.
Very briefly. Mr. Nance, I certainly was not suggesting that there was anything improper in regard to the Bocage decision, it was simply to say that then, the decision was made, for whatever reason, to look at that property in terms of the historic overlay zoning requirement. I'm suggesting that's the same decision that ought to be made here and the same analysis, and there's no, I mean, I understand your concern, and you definitely want to do the right thing, but there's no conflict. I mean, the historic overlay is the one that applies here, the PUD simply shouldn't, based on what it was intended to do. So, to comfort you a little bit, I hope, you don't need to, don't worry, make a decision based on the historic overlay and whether it's complied with because we think it applies.
So, you'll defend me pro bono if somebody sues me?
Actually, he can't, that would be unethical.
Thank you, Mr. Marshon.
It's a nice try, but can't do it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Dumas.
I can appreciate the interpretation of the code, and I have to share with you that when Bocage came before us, I was well aware of the PUD provision. It was my opinion then, and it remains my opinion today, that the intent of that overlay was not to prevent properties that already have an overlay district upon them that authorize them to do certain duties or certain developments, it was not intended for that ordinance to prevent them. So, I voted on the Bocage application, knowing that that PUD was there, with my own personal interpretation, that it didn't apply, and I still believe today that it doesn't apply. Simple as that.
Ms. Amanda, I have a request to make of you. Since Mr. Johnson brought up the issue of the underlying zoning of conservation, not now, but for next month, I'd like a written opinion, and I ask you that you get with your boss, Mr. Batten, all right? I see my interpretation of the ordinance, seventeen dash twenty thirty overlay zones, section A two and section B two, I see a conflict there with section seventeen dash twenty thirty-three, which is the historical site overlay. So, if you would, would you sit down with Mr. Batten? Y'all?
Well, but before you request an opinion, have you looked at page seven of the Development Code where it allows the Planning and Zoning Commission to interpret the ordinance, and it gives you principles to go by?
Well...
Because I think that would help you in your vote tonight.
Well, tonight, we're simply voting on an application, whether we agree with the application, whether or not we're going to put another public hearing on the agenda next month.
Based on what?
The appeals ordinance was, I'm sorry, the application was what was publicly noticed, not a public hearing on the development itself, it's the appeals application.
I have not seen the public notice, but I know the ordinance requires you to reconsider at the next scheduled meeting.
And we are going to be reconsidering that, but we're not holding a public hearing on the development tonight, it's simply the application. Now, that was, we went through this, it was a policy the commission adopted, and it was sanctioned by legal counsel at the time, because legal counsel said, "Look, guys, y'all are going ahead..."
Right, but a policy, a bylaw does not override an ordinance.
No, I did not say bylaw.
Or you said a policy?
I said a policy.
A policy of the Planning Commission?
Of the Planning Commission. That policy was blessed by legal counsel at the time, because legal counsel got on to it and said, "Guys, y'all cannot go ahead and, here you are, we're talking about an appeal that's not being publicly noticed, and y'all are voting on it." So, we said, "Okay, we got to have the application," and he came back and said, "Y'all are voting on the application," and the actual public hearing on the development would be at the next meeting.
I can't speak to what legal counsel before me said, or to the public notice, I don't advertise.
I don't have a, right now...
But I'm looking at the ordinance right now, and I can tell you, an ordinance always trumps a bylaw of the Planning Commission.
It's not the bylaw, it was a policy that was adopted.
Or a policy.
The policy was based on the ordinance, it does not conflict with the ordinance.
Do you have your code with you, Chairman?
Somebody put it in our package.
Okay, seventeen dash forty ninety-two?
Yeah.
I just draw your attention to A, the third line, "May request the Planning Commission to reconsider for approval at the next scheduled meeting." So, it's approval or denial? I think tonight, your vote is either up or down.
If you go further on down in that, though, and there again, maybe this is one of those things that can, there's a conflict in it, because it says, "If we approve the request, then they'll put it on the next scheduled meeting." Now, that's...
What line is that, Mr. Nance?
I don't know, it's about halfway down.
Are you looking at what?
Just the modified.
I believe you are, you're proposing a modification and sending it to the council to basically accomplish what the chairman is trying to do tonight, but I think it's premature. I think tonight, we're dealing with...
I stand corrected.
I think tonight, we're dealing with the text that we've got before us, and any changes to that, we're sending to the council.
Yeah.
That's just my recommendation to you all.
They can come and they can make the request, but this has not been publicly noticed as a public hearing on the development itself, it's strictly on the application.
Do you want to ask staff what the public notice said? Was there a public notice?
It says what the agenda says.
Which is, an appeal?
Appeal of decision application, approval or denial?
I mean, that's public, that's notice to the public that this is being heard tonight for an appeal.
It says application, it doesn't specify the development, it specifies the application.
It says, "Public hearing to approve or deny the following appeal of decision application."
Application. Doesn't say the development, it simply says the application.
Well, I'd point out, Mr. Chairman, for what it's worth, it was our understanding in the appeal and what we submitted to the commission, that what we were asking you to do tonight was to either reverse or affirm your decision that you made in August, and that was to approve the project conditionally. And so, we, it's our understanding that's what was going to happen tonight.
Okay.
It's an up or down on the project.
Okay.
We don't want to wait two minutes. We can wait two minutes. Can we take a two-minute break, please?
We'll take a two-minute breaks. Mr. Dumas, Mr. Dumas has to leave the room for a couple of minutes, in which case, we won't have a quorum, so we can't act on anything.
We're all going to leave the room.
Would you like to call the meeting back to order, please? All right, now we have a quorum back in place.
Can I make one comment that occurred to me while we were on the break, and it addresses
Commissioner Nance's concern about doing something illegal, and certainly, that's not what we're asking him to do, and I don't think that's what would result in any event. If we look at it in context, what we're talking about is a conditional approval, and if you're concerned, Commissioner, is that you might violate the PUD ordinance, and that's, those are the two that are in conflict. What we're asking for is simply a conditional approval, we believe, but we don't know that the PUD will be abolished by the parish council. So, by acting and voting in favor of conditional approval, you can't, you simply couldn't be doing something illegal, because if the condition never occurs, that is, the PUD being withdrawn, then your approval basically is never effective. So, I mean, my point is simply to say that you shouldn't worry about that, because in the context of a conditional approval, it won't be a problem, in my view.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Not them, would like to go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission, sign in, and you'll get your three minutes to speak. This wrote John?
John Abear.
John Abear.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm John Abear, and I'm a resident of Ascension Parish, and I've worked in tourism, trying to bring tourism into Ascension Parish for the past thirty years. We have worked through the Gonzales Committee on Cultural Affairs, and when people come to Louisiana, they don't care about any of this, they want to come and see something, and they want to spend their money here. And, I mean, Ascension Parish has a wealth of history here. We have been in existence, well, not as a parish, but people have been living here since sixteen ninety-nine, and to not vote in favor of Mr. Kelly's project, in my opinion, would be a travesty. Thank you, gentlemen.
Here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, commission. I'm here representing the...
I'm here representing the Downslandville Area Chamber of Commerce. President Marvin Groh wanted to attend tonight. However, he had a illness in his family, he could not make it. He contacted me as past president and now still a present Board of Director and asked me to come instead. We applaud Mr. Kelly for his efforts and achievements towards tourism in Ascension Parish. We think what he's done so far is fantastic. We have seen his plans. We know what he wants to do. We strongly urge that you grant him his appeal and give him conditional approval of his plans for the betterment of Ascension Parish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Karen Hatcher. I'm the President of the Gonzales Committee for Cultural Affairs. And our role is to promote cultural awareness and tourism in the parish and be a liaison between other cultural groups. It is our position that the proposed exemption of the historical sites would be a positive thing for the parish for several reasons. First of all, it would greatly enhance the wow factor of Ascension. As John mentioned, we have a lot of things going for us and this would pull a lot more people in the parish. It would lure tourists not only from far away, but just from Baton Rouge and New Orleans, people who want to get away for not a long travel period, but a short jaunt into the countryside and enjoy Ascension Parish. It will create jobs. The other plantations and historical sites will greatly benefit from this, as well as the restaurants and hotels in the area. I think that's already been mentioned. I think local residents would enjoy the pride that we would feel from having such a venue here in the parish. So my, our recommendation is that you would, or we would hope that you would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Mike Eads. I'm the President and CEO of the Ascension Economic Development Corporation. At the risk of appearing to be condescending, I would like to give you a lesson in what I call Economic Development 101. And that lesson is very simple. Capital flows to where it's wanted and it stays where it's appreciated. Capital flows to where it's wanted and it stays where it's appreciated. Very, very simple lesson. It seems to me we've gotten away here, way down, sidetracked on the eyes on the prize. Do you all want Mr. Kelly's investment in the parish? Do you want the jobs? Do you want to diversify the economy? It's a simple question to us, yes or no. We've been dealing with this for eight months now. You've been dealing with it for three at least. And I will have to tell you this, if it was any other kind of prospect that we normally deal with on a day-to-day basis, that'd been gone by now, a long time ago. We're just simply asking you to do the right thing for this parish, and that is to let Mr. Kelly do what he proposes to do under the historic overlay. Just in closing, I want to be clear about this. We're not asking you to do Mr. Kelly a favor, all right? We're asking you to allow Mr. Kelly to do Ascension Parish a favor by investing more money and creating more jobs here. And it's as simple as that.
Roy Gilling.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for the time. On behalf of the Capital Reason Home Builders Association, along with the other construction industry of commercial and residential, we are asking you to vote in favor of the conditional approval proposed by Mr. Kelly. We are just in awe of the fact that this gentleman was able to put together this grant and his proposal. This is a record in this area. It's a record in our state. It's a record across the nation. It's got a tremendous buzz going for it. It's going to be a great plus for our community. And of course, you know, there's a lot of buzz right now from the White House all the way down, jobs. You know, the reality of it is, when we put one construction worker in the field, it had to employ three manufacturing people in different facilities everywhere, from the manufacturing of all the different raw products that it took to get that product to the site. So it's a real big outreach of what this kind of impact can do, and that's what we need to get the economic engine rolling. But beyond that is the long term because it's really going to be a tremendous sustenance for this parish with the amount of people who are going to come, the activities, and what this is going to generate for the benefit of our parish. So just in closing, please vote in favor of this conditional approval and we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Anne Shainefelt and I live in Prairieville and I'm here on behalf of myself. I'm here supporting conditional approval of the Homeless House designs with the provision that Homeless House and other plantations be exempt from the PUD restrictions that overlap the historic districts. And I ask you and say it would be a shame that we get drawn into political posturing and arguments that are being set forth by some people here that would cause this to drag out and cause Mr. Kelly to lose his grant. I mean, he's putting forth his own money into this and like some other people are saying, he is investing in us. He is giving his money to us so that we can have this great treasure. And, you know, I go there every chance I get. And my children enjoy this and my family enjoys this and it is a treasure. And I hope to see you grant conditional approval. Thank you.
You.
Good evening. My name is Vito Zapardo. I'm a resident of Gonzales. I'm basically echoing the sentiments that I heard previously. The message here, I think, is economic development mainly. You know, the parish spends our tax dollars to promote ourselves to industry. Here we have a gentleman that's raising his hand to spend money in our parish. I think it's only right to go ahead and approve this. It is obviously presently an asset to the parish and will, the improvements will just enhance that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. I have worked at several of the plantation homes. I think they're a jewel on the river. I'm the mother of four children. I think history is more important than anything. Mr. Kevin has a wonderful operation and I think it should continue. It would be a great loss to Ascension Parish.
You.
Craig Black.
Hey, y'all. I'm Craig Black. I've been showing off Ascension Parish for thirty-seven years. I've been living at Homeless House. I do the gardens there. I share a common purpose with many of the people who are in opposition to this plan. I've been asking myself about the Planning Commission, what they should strive for, and isn't what we're looking for a development that's an advantage to the community? There are six basic areas to look at. Is it clean? Is it going to pollute our environment? This one doesn't. Is it cohesive with what already exists? Does it bring investment? Will the parish profit from taxes, from associated purchases, the malls, the gas stations and like that? Does it bring new money? Do people from out of the country come here and spend their money in our parish? And last and important, does it bring jobs now? We don't need jobs in six months. We need jobs now. The people that are unemployed have to eat today. It's our common interest here. The project should not be held up for any reason at all. It's, you're the Planning Commission. You should find a way to funnel things that are good plans for the parish. You know, I've heard it said about special treatment and we've had all this quibbling about one thing or another, but the bottom line is, we have somebody here who has the will, has the absolute will and is willing to strive for excellence for us. I see it every day. There's no question in my mind about it. The people who are quibbling with this are quibbling about words. Are the quibblers going to win here? Do we hold up everything just so we can quibble about stuff? Because that's what's holding up the project and it's, we're not going forward because of that. It's, it's just words. I mean, if the words are wrong, if the project is right, if the project meets the things we need it to meet and the words are wrong, we need to change the words. Bottom line. And everybody needs to be doing that, making sure we change the words. The commission has to decide if it's going to hold up with the quibblers or if it's going to go forward into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good afternoon, oh, I'm sorry, good evening. Esteemed gentlemen, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Many of you actually know me because I'm a tour guide at Homeless House. And looking at the video monitor, I am regretting this shirt. I've realized to my heart that I look like a couch. But, all humor aside, many of you have seen me over the last eight years, giving tours, singing for Homeless House. And the one thing that struck me when I walked in the door this evening was looking at the seal for the parish of Ascension, Louisiana, where my mother's people came from, and seeing a historic plantation home. That made me stop and go, "Really?" The bottom line is, I'm a divorced parent with four kids. Two are in college, thank God, they don't have any kids. Two are in high school, thank God, they don't have any kids. And people go, "Why is that a problem? Because I'm forty-six, I do not want to be a grandma at forty-six." But when I go home at night, my kids ask me, "Mom, how was your day?" And I talk about the people I've met and the people I've sung for and the things I've done. And sometimes I talk about people who bring bad children on tour, rude tourists, drunks. And there's one really creepy accountant who always comes on my tour because he's like, "Girl, you fine." But you want to know what happens when I finish talking about it? My kids tell their friends, "My mom's a tour guide." And I didn't realize, to my shock, I was actually, I had become the cool mom. Because I go someplace where I meet people from around the world, where when I talk to them about Homeless House and the history and Louisiana, they're amazed and so many of them come back. And at the end of the day, when I sing about the different songs and even the song that became part of Homeless history, "Hush, Hush Sweet Charlotte," when I stand here right now, it breaks my heart to see the arguing, the politics, the posturing. And I want everybody here right now to see a little chubby black woman who works one job and extra jobs and doesn't get public assistance, standing in front of you guys and saying, "Don't threaten my job. Don't threaten my joy. Don't force because of politics and whatever issues you guys have or whoever has what." And frankly, I don't care because my first mind was to actually bring a gree-gree bag, a chicken foot and some brick dust and see where it went. But I said, "Judy, you're supposed to be a Christian. Voodoo is frowned upon." At the end of the day, those of you who are against it, you don't have to like Kevin Kelly.
Thirty seconds, ma'am.
As I've often said, thank you. I've often said, "If I ain't sleeping with him, I ain't worried about him." But at least appreciate what the man is trying to do. And at the end of the day, you've got a lot of people here working for Homeless House that are waiting with bated breath in hopes that we can advance and grow and make Ascension Parish so proud of us that one day this is not an argument or politics anymore. This was a bump in the road to making Ascension Parish one of the best parishes in Louisiana. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Sandy Scallan and I don't know how to follow that, y'all. I'm a resident here of Ascension Parish. I'm a Realtor and a member of the Chamber of Ascension Parish. I support Mr. Kelly and what he's doing and the influx of the money and the economic development for this parish. The proposed changes to Homeless House are immersive and they will really affect us short-term and long-term. I'm very proud to be a resident of this parish and I'm proud of the vast number of people in this audience today here to support him and his endeavors. Whether you're a homeowner, a builder, a Realtor, or a Homeless House employee, there are many people that support this issue. And again, let's not make it a technicality. Let's support Mr. Kelly in what he's trying to do and advance the economic development of this parish. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Sherry Despino. I'm the President and CEO of the Ascension Chamber of Commerce. And the Ascension Chamber of Commerce represents about five hundred chamber members. And I do have a letter that I'd like to read from our Board of Directors. In February, the Ascension Chamber of Commerce wrote a letter of support for a proposal to create an Ascension Parish Cultural District in the Burnside Dara area. Seven months later, we are here to show our support for the development of property within the cultural district. The development would enhance our parish visibility and will have a tremendous economic reach. The proposed project will strengthen community and business partnerships, promote our local culture, and produce an overall positive effect for our parish. Our mission at the Chamber of Commerce is to facilitate and foster economic growth for our members. It's very discerning that the Planning and Zoning Commission is not granting a proposal to develop a project that will bring jobs and foster economic growth for our parish. We support the Planning and Zoning Commission allowing the Homeless House development to proceed under the provisions of the historical district and be allowed as a historical plantation to forego the restrictions of the PUD overlay. We understand that this same exception has been used previously by this commission for another plantation on historical property and are asking that the same be done for Homeless House. We encourage the Planning and Zoning Commissions to accept the plans for development of the Homeless House property and allow this development to proceed under the historical district overlay without delay. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Very briefly, because I know there's been a lot of comments tonight, I think as a representative of the business community and an employer in this area, one of the things that struck me about this project is that this year, our company was ranked the, one of the large employers of the year. We have twenty-five people on staff, okay? And Ascension Chamber of Commerce ranked us the largest employer of the year for one of their awards. And this kind of hit me. We've got a lot of small to medium-sized companies out here, but this area, we need more employers. My twenty-five people who are on staff here in Ascension Parish, most of them, their spouses, all work outside of this area. They need jobs. They need places that their spouses can work. Even if I give them a job, they need something else. And so any project that we can put before us and approve that increases our ability to employ our citizens here is something that we're definitely behind one hundred percent. We're here to support Kevin Kelly and his project. We're amazed at what he's done so far. We think if you guys can basically resolve this technicality where he can proceed with the historical overlay and not the PUD overlay, this will streamline his ability to get this project through and we'll all be better off for it. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Justine Lambert. I am a resident of Ascension Parish and I've also been in various positions in the tourism industry for about a decade. We have spent literally millions of dollars in research over who our visitor is, who we want to attract here and how do we reach them. There is a niche of our tourists that are exceptionally good to South Louisiana and they're known as the cultural tourists. A cultural tourist is someone who comes to see architectural gems like a Homeless House, a Bocage. They come for our local fairs and festivals. They come to the, to see and get a feel for the local flair. They come to our small theaters, to our small museums and art galleries and they want to eat local food. These people are. These people are so important to us because they generally are older than your, your normal travel, leisure traveler, they have more money, they spend longer when they're he, longer time when they're here, 5.2 nights versus 3.4. These numbers may not seem significant, but there are 118 million of these American adult travelers, we call cultural travelers. These are the people who will bring so much to not just inside the gates of Homeless House, but to all of Ascension Parish. How wonderful would it be for our local festivals to see an influx of millions of people every year? How wonderful would it be for our Tanger Mall to see an influx of tens of thousands, up to 100,000 people a year? Our local restaurants, our local shops, it could do so much for downtown Donaldsonville. So, this affects people more than just inside the gates of Homeless House. And I really have been so excited about seeing this project take off, and I hope that we can, we can begin moving forward soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Steven Wyndham? Good evening, thank you for your time. I'm with the Lieutenant Governor's Office. This is a great follow-up for the information that Jesse was providing. We have some numbers that show the impacts of the tourism industry that come into the state of Louisiana, if I can give you some information.
Certainly, please, sir.
Of course, like many of the people that have been up here, we are in favor of this project. We would ask that you would appeal, reverse your decision, and then give positive consideration to the project itself. The impact of the tourists that come into the state, as you can see on these figures, are about $510 per night, I mean, per visit, which is about two and a half nights. So, it comes up to a positive impact for the community of approximately $218,000 in tax revenues, based upon a 75% occupancy just of your hotels. International travelers come in, they may fly into New Orleans, but from there, they venture out into the cultural arena that we have around the state. Then they go back to New Orleans to spend the night. If they stay here, stay at the facilities, spend their dollars here locally, it will greatly improve the ability to, the parish, to hold them in the area longer. So, maybe they'll spend a few extra nights, they'll spend some time in New Orleans, they'll come into Ascension Parish, they'll travel throughout the state. So, we would wholeheartedly ask for your positive decision to reverse the, the decision that you made last time, and give full consideration to the project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Justin Clouat? Good afternoon, Council. I'm Dustin Clouat. I'm a resident of Sonoma. First, let me start off with, I'm no expert in zoning. I'm an insurance agent and also a former business owner of a company that fueled off of Mr. Kevin Kelly's investments, River Parish Limousines. Since Mr. Kelly has purchased the property, I've seen nothing but great things come of it. He has transferred the plantation from a place that we once passed without acknowledging, back to the crown jewel of the Mississippi River as it once was. We now have a fine dining restaurant in the parish, along with a tourist attraction that is second to none, that draws thousands of people a week while passing on I-10. From the financial impact that I saw with what I would call my limo company, a small-time operation, I can just imagine how the hotel and surrounding attractions have benefited. I support Mr. Kevin Kelly and his $35 million project, as he has already proved himself to you and I. I believe he has done nothing but made Ascension Parish a better place to call home. I accept you grant Ascension, a grant Homeless House, a conditional approval. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
A gem, and I'm having difficulty, is there a gem? Difficulty with the last name.
I'll write better next time. Good evening, my name's Jimmy Blanchard. I'm responsible for the project, designing it. So, just a little bit of history on the property. I'm not really a person for the details of the law and all of the legalities of all of this, but I can tell you, Homeless House is an evolution of over 300 years of change. It started with Daniel Clark, when he enlarged the place and kept, became the largest sugar plantation along the river. It's grown, there were hundreds of buildings on the property. And every family and every person that came through to this property added their touch to it. It evolved through the years. The house has changed. It started off as a four-room house, and then grew to two houses, then connected, then they added more and more, until what it is today. Homeless House is one of the rare plantations along the river, is that it's still alive, it's still evolving. It still is a residence that entertains people and provides, hopefully, accommodations again, as it did through its history. I don't think any of the things in the past could have ever happened if there were laws that confined them, that they couldn't grow. I mean, these properties have to be allowed to grow and develop. You know, Ascension Parish owes quite a bit of its history and what it is today to Homeless House. It was the largest plantation, it took over about 40% of Ascension Parish at one time. You know, thousands of people lived there. They moved away, everything was torn down, pretty much, except for a few buildings. And now, we're putting back some to give some of the character and the charm back, and bring residential back to this community, to that area along the river. It's kind of an isolated area, as all of y'all know now. When I came here years ago to start spending time here, very few people knew what Homeless House was. You ask people in Ascension Parish, what's that? Oh, the house on the river? Now, people know what it is, they're proud of it. You know, and, I mean, you can see here today how many people in the audience are here who love Homeless House and appreciate it. Show of hands, guys. So, we ask that we allow Homeless House to continue its evolution, and continue to grow, and be a major part of Ascension Parish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Martha Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. It's been a long time since I've been before the Planning Commission. I'm, I want to, first of all, thank you for what you do. I know this is a thankless job, it is not paid, and it's very hard. But this commission is challenged with making changes when they need to be changed. This is a living document. And we know that, as you heard people talk, that there's changes. Nothing is permanent. This is an example of where a PUD overlay went, was included over, or with a historical overlay. And we can make that right. And I understand that that is going to be going to the council to remove it. But the project itself merits your approval, pending the issue, which you were talking about, Mr. Nance, about the legality. You don't want to do something that's not correct. But you do have an opportunity to go forward with the project, pending the issues that are at hand, that need to be changed. You sit here all the time where there are issues that come before you, that you have to make a decision, that needs, maybe might, is not right, and you have to make the choice to say, I want to approve it, pending such and such, to make it right. Mr. Kelly's is an example of what happens. And I would just hope that you would sit back and consider the things that we have to do. As we look forward, as Mr. Ead said, when I was in economic development, if this was a project of this caliber that was coming to Ascension Parish, that was pending something like this, they'd have been gone months ago. Months. You do not want to come in an area that is not receptive to doing business. We have a lot to be proud of. We have a lot of good things here. And I would just hope that you would consider that when you vote, to reverse your opinion. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Kamal Zahar. I'm the owner of Kamal's Cafe. I was the only Lebanese restaurant in Ascension until two months ago. But I'm still the best. You know, I like, I like the word hummus, because it's in my menu. When people go to Hummus House, they think about my restaurant, so they come to my restaurant. But I've been in Ascension for nine years, and I opened my restaurant six years ago. And my second year, I won Small Business of the Year, and I have 18 employees, they're all from Ascension. I, you know, I lived in Baton Rouge for 21 years, I never thought, or decide, or think about opening a business, until I moved to Ascension two years later, when I was in Ascension, I said, man, this is a great place, great people, all the leaders, they work together, and I decided to open Kamal's Cafe. And a lot of people's like, are you crazy? Opening a Lebanese restaurant in Ascension? I'm a positive person. I don't hang around negative people, I stay away from them, I don't follow, I lead. We live in a great place, let's make it great, and let's move forward. Because in a month or two, I'm thinking to open my second location, that make me question mark. Do I need to do that in Ascension? If we're going to be a negative, and the warning could be change. Think about the people we're going to put to work, think about the growth that people are going to bring to Ascension, and just the name for Ascension go further and further. That's great things to happen in Ascension. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wade Schecksneider? Good evening, members of the Planning and Zoning Committee. My name is Wade Schecksneider. I'm a citizen resident here of Ascension Parish. I ask all of you right now to turn your backs and look at the parish seal. You're going to see four displayed icons. Industry, represented by the chemical plants. Sugar plant, uh, sugarcane is representing for agriculture. The Mississippi River, representing transportation and commerce. And of course, tourism, represented by the Homeless House. On every document that's signed by the Ascension Parish President and any administration, yourself, anybody here, has the Homeless House a part of it. I ask that you reverse your decision, and place more prominently the understanding that Mr. Kelly, what he's trying to do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Charlotte Johnson? Thank you, Commissioners. I think we all agree that this is an excellent project. I haven't heard one person, although I have heard people say that there were negative comments, I haven't heard one negative comment about the Kelly, Mr. Kelly's proposal in the Homeless House. It is a wonderful opportunity for Ascension Parish, and I completely support it. The only problem, the technicality that everyone is referring to, is a law. The people of Ascension residents, I live in District 2, there's a PUD overlay over 1, 2, and 3. This restricts our land rights. We have been trying to remove the PUD overlays for over a year. I'm hoping tomorrow at the council meeting, that this is resolved. I hope that Mr. Schecksneider, you can tell Mr. Schecksneider to vote positively on that, so that we can get that rid of. And this would be a non-issue. I would hope that the citizens that turned out tonight would give the same consideration of the 72-year-old person with his property that's coming before the commission, to talk about his land, and what he wants to do with his land, with the PUD overlay. I hope the citizens would give him the same concern and support, because it's about the law, and it's about landowner rights. And Mr. Kelly, unfortunately, you're living in District 2 with the Homeless House. Because if you were in eight other districts, this would not be our problem. And that's the unfortunate thing. And we have been battling for over a year to get rid of this. Mr. Dumas, you said this with the bocage development, that you knew there was a PUD overlay over that development, and did not bring that up for discussion with the commission. I think that was an, an opportunity to have that kind of, because that's in the district that's with the, affected. And I think you exercised poor judgment with that, and that was an ethical compromise, in my opinion. Because those are challenges that the citizens of Ascension are facing. These are not technicalities, or just dribble words. These are laws that are affecting our lives and our land rights. And we need to get them removed. And I hope tomorrow, the council's going to do that very thing, so the commission can make good decisions for our economic development. Because, Mr. Kelly, your development is a good thing for our parish, and I completely support you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Shaheen? My name's Glenn Shaheen, I'm a local business owner. I am with the firm of GSA Consulting Engineers at Prepera Road in Gonzales, Louisiana. This issue has been around for quite some time now. Unfortunately, Mr. Kelly's project now has been a victim of, I guess, maybe indecision or uncertainty about what to do with these various ordinances. I think everyone has alluded to tonight that they all support this project. I think most people in this room have admitted that maybe there are some discrepancies with the various ordinances that are in play, or in place today. The fundamental issue before you tonight, has it, as it has been for quite some time, and I'm not sure what the, what the process is, and where it needs to go to get resolved. But the fundamental issue is, is how do we resolve this issue, and prevent this from happening again? And how do we resolve this issue to allow Mr. Kelly's project to move forward? It's a good project, we all support the project, everyone in this room does. So, what is the problem? Where's the issue? Find a solution to the problem, and let's allow this project to move forward, and let's eliminate this from being a problem on future projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joey Freyou? My name is Joey Freyou, and I'm the very proud general manager of Homeless House. My message today, with great respect for the entity, that is the Planning Commission, and for the individuals that make up that commission. It is my charge as the general manager to instruct and develop the minds and work ethic of the young people who fill these jobs that we have been talking about all night. We develop them in ways that will further their ability to influence the development and advancement of this parish. In our process of judging how much progress we make, how much progress they make, it is our practice to explain to them and to ask of them, that we judge our progress in the mirror, and that we look in the mirror as individuals, and ask, did I do my best? Any peace of mind, any satisfaction, any accomplishment that we attain is viewed there, because it is about that effort. I hope, and it is my prayer, that for us, and for you as individuals, at the end of this process, that you are able to look in that mirror. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Doug Bujwa? Hi, my name's Doug Bujwa, and I'm a commissioner on the Louisiana Mississippi River Parkway Commission. It's a multi-state federal commission that involves all the states along the Great River Road, from Canada all the way down to the Gulf. Now, our commission meetings are not quite as well-attended as yours, and we, we probably have just a little bit more fun than you have, but we take our jobs just as seriously, and we're very passionate about what we do. And one of those things is to promote the Great River Road as an international destination for visitors. Now, a few years ago, we supported the Louisiana Great River Road when it went for national designation, National Scenic Byway Designation, and we achieved that, making it the largest part of the river road that achieved that designation, 717 miles, of one of the largest scenic byways in the country. Then we also supported the application for Homeless House to create the steamboat of Ascension Parish. Then we also supported the application for Homeless House to create the Steamboat Overlook. And we made history with that application. We gained the largest grant award in the history of the scenic byway program to one project. And we're very proud of that support. We made history. Unfortunately, I think you know that there are things going on federally that maybe are a little bleak. Funding is coming to an end on many projects. We made history with this grant and it's important that we move as quickly as we can to put this into action because we don't want to make history again by losing it. I know you have a great responsibility and you have to weigh a lot of options, but I really hope that you can look at this and help this project get to the next level. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Trudy Burnett and I've been a lifelong resident of Darrow. I think we all agree that Mr. Kelly has a great project and will have, it will have a great economic impact on Ascension Parish. My argument is that my family and I have to live under this putt overlay, the same putt overlay that Homeless House is under, despite promises from people in higher authority that it would be removed. I don't think anyone deserves special treatment. And if I'm not privy to being removed from under the putt overlay, why should anyone else? We should all be treated as equal. If the putt overlay is a mistake for one, it's a mistake for all, not just for a certain few. What's good for the goose is good for the gander.
Thank you.
Patty Boudreau. I live in Darrow, have lived there all of my life. As a matter of fact, I live right up the river from Homeless House. I reside and own part of what used to be the Hermitage. Matter of fact, I was lucky enough that my mom was born in that house. And I do think it's a wonderful thing that Mr. Kelly's trying to do to bring the history to everybody. However, to repeat Ms. Johnson, it's a law that seems to be stopping it. However, when we started fighting this putt overlay, had promises been followed through by higher authorities, we wouldn't be having this fight. And I'm sitting and I'm listening and everybody seems to be blaming us and y'all for not letting him have this thing done. It's not that. You have the law. And if he doesn't have, or Homeless House doesn't have to abide by the law, why do the rest of us? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello again and, and thank you so much. I just want to commend the Commissioners for their patience. A lot of things have been said. This really wasn't all your fault, but you have to take, take all this stuff. We really do like the project. Never has been a question about the project and we welcome what it will bring to Ascension Parish. I think we all agree on that. And it will have a positive economic impact. Just to note, the grant, which is federal money, comes out of our pockets, not his. That's 5.2 million and then he will add 1.9 million of his own. In the putt overlay, there are no variances allowed, so we've got a problem with the law on that and this project. It's really not about any technicality, as many people have said. I want to read a little portion here from the law or the code that we have and we're talking about a pre-development meeting. "The purpose of the pre-development meeting is to ensure compliance with all applicable portions of the Ascension Parish Development and Zoning Codes." And someone recently made a statement that, you know, y'all are here and you need to be willing to change your mind and all this. Well, you are tasked with ensuring that the codes that are in place are followed. And that is a, a big job. But that is your job. The historical overlay really only deals with landscaping and architecture. The putt overlay deals with the density and other things. It allows things that the code doesn't normally allow. It's unfortunate, I believe, that bocage slipped through the cracks. It's sad to me that we had a Commissioner state that he knew about it and he didn't bring it to the attention of anyone else on the commission. It is obvious that there are some problems in the planning process, which I've mentioned before, that really need to be fixed. And I do hope that with encouragement from the council, tomorrow night when they have a public hearing, I hope some of you will come tomorrow night. There's a public hearing in this room. The meeting starts at six. I hope there'll be as many people tomorrow night because the, the citizens have been working for over one year to get this putt overlay removed. Had the officials responded, Mr. Kelly wouldn't be here today and all these people wouldn't have to stand here and come and speak. I really thank you for your time and whatever you're going to do, we'll be watching.
Hi, thank you. I am a business professional in the area, but I come here not as that tonight, but as a resident. I'm one of those cultural tourists that was bandied about earlier and I was one of the fortunate ones who was allowed to get one of those jobs in this community. So I went from tourist to professional and it's all happened in Ascension. My confusion with tonight is that everyone's banding about those words. It's the law, it's the law, it's the law. Well, according to what I've researched and what I've read, it was a historical overlay first. And the law for that stipulates that it's architecture and that it's landscape. Well, the gardens that Mr. Kelly wants to create are landscape. Museums and restaurants and cottages are architecture. That's the law. The putt should not infringe on something that was already in place. That should be the law. Wordings can be changed. Life here in Ascension needs to be changed. We need people from far away to come here and see what I see and what others like me see and why we want to call it home. We're losing cultural things in this area. We've lost the Boucherie Festival simply because people can't agree on where they can hold it. It might not be a lot to somebody, but it's a lot to many. Please don't do this. Just, just don't. It, it doesn't make any sense. It's all about wording and it's all about, you know, somebody, in my honest opinion, somebody doesn't seem to like somebody and we've ended up here doing this. And as somebody, as somebody who's really proud to be new to this area, please do not make me regret that choice. That's really all I've got to say.
Thank you.
My name is Brian Aguilar. I wasn't originally from Ascension Parish. We moved here in 1996 and started a business here and we've done well. We love Ascension Parish. I love Ascension Parish. If anybody that doesn't love Ascension Parish, I'm sure East Baton Rouge would love to have you. Every morning I wake up and I look at a picture of me and my wife standing in front of Homeless House. We were married there. My father-in-law spent a small fortune there. And if it wasn't for Mr. Kelly and his investment in the past, I'm sure that we would have went somewhere else. It's a great thing that we have here and I would appreciate it if we could continue to have a good thing here. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm glad to see all this participation tonight. I hope we have this much participation tomorrow night when this issue comes up in front of the council. No one is denying that the homeless house is a jewel of the parish. No one is denying that this will bring jobs. No one is denying that this is a project that needs to move forward. I'm not against economic development. I'm not against jobs. I've lived here since I was two and I'm about to tell my age. I'm 46. So I've lived here for many, many years. I love this parish. My children live here. They go to school here. The homeless house is a worthwhile project. But what is at issue is what we've been fighting against for a year is the law and the ordinances. If you do not like the ordinances, please ask the council to change them and remove them. There are a variety of overlays, from what I understand, on properties. Historic overlays, putt overlays, sewage overlays, different overlays. And it doesn't matter what was there first, it's what is affecting the property. This is affecting the property. If we can't, if the, the Planning and Zoning Commission is not to follow the law on what they're asked to do, then there's no point in having a Planning and Zoning Commission. What has happened in the past is what is not in front of our commission tonight. The Planning and Zoning Commission is asked to approve this project even though that they know that they'll be breaking the ordinance. I'm asking for the Planning and Zoning Commission to take everything into consideration and make the decision that you think is right. We have always come to meetings and supported you. We often disagree with you, but we've never asked you to do anything that is against the law. I keep hearing about the intent of this ordinance or the intent of the law. The Commissioners do not have a magic ball. They did not know what the intent was when the ordinance was, was in place. We cannot follow intent. We have to follow what it says.
Thirty seconds.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I think everyone that has come here, I really appreciate the job that y'all do. I hope everyone that is here will be at the meeting tomorrow night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commission. My name's Billy Aguilar. I've been a business owner in Ascension Parish for 20 years. At one time I had 68 employees. Today I'm down to eight. Eight of my employees live in Ascension Parish. I do not. My son lives here in Ascension Parish. My kids live here in Ascension Parish. The homeless house is a great, a great project. Everybody keeps talking about the law. We just approved three family petitions with conditions and/or variances. You can do the same here tonight. You can approve this thing conditionally to let it move forward, condition that the putt and the overlay be removed. I will be at the council meeting tomorrow night to speak to have it removed. I think Mr. Kelly at the last meeting said that he would recommend that the putt overlay be removed. So I don't think that's a problem. The other, the other question is the conservation overlay. You can prove it conditionally that conservation overlay from the legal opinion does not conflict with the historical overlay. So you can approve this thing conditionally to move it forward and I hope you'd do so. And as everybody here tonight has said, I have not heard one person speak that this is a bad project. Personally, I think Mr. Kelly's crazy to spend $30 million of his own money to do this project. So let's help the man do a good project and do a great tourism project for this parish. It brings in money from out of state, out of parish, and out of this country. It's something we need as economic stimulus for this parish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilmen. I would just like to say, my name is Glenda Shaheen and we own a business in the city of Gonzales. I live in Donisonville. I am Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors member and also I'm on the Louisiana Economic Development Ready City Committee for the city of Donisonville. This project is a wonderful, wonderful project for both sides of the river. We are so excited that Mr. Kelly would go ahead and invest so much in our parish. The only thing that I'm asking of you is to go ahead, as Mr. Aguilar just said, go ahead and approve this on, on the conditions as set forth on conservation and also the putt overlay. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Brad Walker. I own several businesses in the parish. I wanted to show my support for the homeless house. I would like to say that as a Planning and Zoning Commission, that y'all work somehow to get this project approved. If it's a zoning ordinance problem, it's a planning and zoning problem, you are the Planning and Zoning Commission. Make whatever changes you need to make. Approve whatever changes you need to make, you know? Give a valid reason why you do not want to approve this project, okay? Then send that to the council and say, here, we've worked out our differences, okay? And send it to the council, you know? That's all anybody's asking here. I don't want to repeat, you know, Glenda and everybody else saying, you know? I'm assuming nobody likes paying property taxes to Jeff Wiley in the beginning of the year, you know? If we realize we get more businesses in the parish, that's more sales tax. That could reduce property taxes in the long run. So that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission, I'm speaking on behalf of the parish president and for the administration. And our question to the commission is, what is the end game and why would anyone object to this project? This project is an example of the type of economic development that communities embrace. It is, it is an expansion project that creates 70 to 90 permanent jobs. Ascension Parish is currently ninth in the nation for job creation because of our ability as a parish to provide the infrastructure and the community that keeps businesses here and ever-expanding. We are so fortunate in this economy to have jobs here. We became aware of this project in February when Mr. Kelly was having trouble with his application to the Department of Transportation Scenic Byways Grant Program because of the continuing resolution that Congress was running under at the time. The parish president, parish president offered to help in any way that he could. The parish president, Martha Collins, members of the chamber, and I traveled to Washington in February to discuss several transportation issues, one of the, one of them being Mr. Kelly's grant. We met with Senators Vitter and Landry, Congressman Cassidy and Landry. I have copies of the letters of support from our senators. Through the help of our delegation, we were successful in finally being granted the largest scenic byways grant ever given under this program to a single entity. The grant is but a small portion of the $35 million project, but it was our way to help with the project that the parish president and this administration are fully behind. It creates a destination for Ascension Parish that will change the face of tourism in this parish. It is our job in government to provide the fabric for success rather than block job creation. We as an administration and as citizens are proud that we have all of the assets of a successful community. We have great education. We have a governmental administration that has had several perfect external audits year after year and citizenry who care and get involved. You can see by the diversity in this room that the success of this project is important to many people because they recognize the benefit it brings to our community and are grateful for people like Mr. Kelly who invest in our parish. We need to continue to find ways to change any issues that the zoning laws create that impede successful projects like this one.
Thirty seconds.
Our zoning challenges 20 years ago are entirely different than today and will be different 20 years from today. The administration recommended approval with conditions through our interpretation of zoning issues. We have done other projects like this one under the same exact conditions and the same body approved them. To find fault with a project like this, which create, which is green, creates jobs, has the support all the way from Washington DC through the help of our delegations, both Senate and Congressional, and the people of this community, is nothing but petty politics by a few who endeavor to continue to rob this parish of its potential. We ask this committee on behalf of the administration to move this project forward.
Ms. James, time.
I'm not a, I'm, I'm, I'm not.
No, ma'am. You are speaking under the public comment period.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else, Mr. Compton? And the public comment period on this item is concluded.
Mr. Chairman, may I provide a brief closing remark on?
You have the opportunity to rebut the comments made, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's interesting. I've listened, and I don't think that I could begin to summarize or even explain all the diverse comments that you've heard here by members of the community who, without exception, have supported this project. But it's interesting, even those who have expressed opposition to the project say that it's not because they have a problem with what Mr. Kelly proposes to do. It's an issue of the PUD overlay and how it ought to apply. And that's the narrow, it's really the only opposition that anybody has raised here. Members of the commission, there's a very easy answer here. We are simply asking for a conditional approval of this project. We're not asking, Mr. Nance expressed concern, and I completely understand that he do something in violation of this ordinance, this PUD ordinance. That's not what we're asking you to do. We're simply asking you to conditionally approve the project. And what's interesting, and I listened very carefully to those who spoke in opposition, and there weren't very many, all of them said, we're in favor of the project. Our concern is the PUD. The same folks said they intend to go to the meeting tomorrow night and ask that it be repealed. The solution here is very simple, members of the commission. You should grant a conditional approval for all the reasons that we've discussed. Conditionally approve the project. There's nothing improper, illegal about that, and that's absolutely the right thing to do for the parish in light of the project and what Mr. Kelly has proposed. We thank you very much for your patience tonight. This has been a long hearing. We understand, and we appreciate the commission's attention to this. We ask very respectfully that you reverse the decision that you made in August and that you conditionally approve the project that Mr. Kelly has proposed at the homeless house plantation. Thank you.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
I have a couple of comments. I've heard it over and over and over and over again that, don't worry about the law. I'm paraphrasing that. Don't worry about the law. We backed, backed, no. I didn't interrupt y'all when y'all were speaking, so please let me speak without y'all making comment. My subcommittee sent to this commission back in the spring the recommendation to get rid of everything to do with PUTs because it was, the PUD idea is basically a good idea, but our PUD ordinance had lots of problems with it. And as you can tell, this PUD overlay was also, then the commission unanimously voted to send it to the council for their approval to repeal the PUD ordinances. Well, they chose not to do that. They sent it to Strategic Planning Committee where it died. Then we realized that we still had a problem with the PUD overlay, so we've, we sent that to the council. And fortunately, they decided to act on it. And that is really why, the only reason I voted to deny the project last time because I thought that there was a definite conflict in the law. And unless the council repeals the PUD ordinance, there's still going to be a conflict. But after talking to legal, I really don't have a problem with the conditional approval if the commission chooses to vote that way.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I just want to echo Commissioner Nance's comments. I mean, nobody's asking anybody to break any laws. I think the commission acted diligently last month when we made a recommendation to the parish council that they repeal the overlay district. That's scheduled for tomorrow night's agenda, and I encourage everybody to go over there in support of that repeal. It was a, it was a matter that should have been dealt with some time ago. We've approved many, many, many projects with a condition of approval, and this is just like many of those projects that we've approved. We're simply, a motion to approve this project, subject to that condition, simply says, staff, you may proceed if and when the ordinance is repealed. Prior to that, that approval is simply a vote of the commission that cannot be promulgated until such time as the appeal takes place. So we will not be breaking any laws, in my opinion.
Any other comments or questions from commissioners? Commissioners, I still, all right, Mr. Dumas, you and Mr. Barrow both sat on this commission with me when we adopted appeals policy that was based on the ordinance. Our legal counsel at that time told us, you only vote on the application. You're not voting on the development. So tonight, we're only voting on the application, not the development. Now, you and Mr. Barrow both voted on that at the time, and you agreed with it.
I'm going to have to defer to legal. I don't necessarily agree with this. I believe that the policy is a policy that we hold. It is not the code. And it was, and in my opinion, it's been always very clear to us that we cannot adopt policies that supersede the code.
Doesn't supersede the code. It's based on the code, Mr. Dumas.
I would have to defer to legal and have legal advice on that matter.
There are no other comments or questions from the commission? What's the wish of the commission?
I'm going to make a motion to approve the project with a condition, subject to the parish council repealing the overlay as recommended by the planning commission at last month's public hearing.
Second.
Have a motion to approve with a condition by Julio Dumas, seconded by Steve Barrow. Discussion.
Could you reread that motion or restate the motion?
It's a motion to approve the project, subject to the PUD overlay district, overlay ordinance being repealed by the parish council as recommended by the planning commission during our August public hearing. We made a recommendation of parish council last month, and recommending approval, subject to the parish council, repealing it in accordance with our recommendation.
The ordinance?
The ordinance. The entire PUD overlay district ordinance, correct.
All right. Any other discussion? Then we'll vote. Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Esnar? Motion passes. We'll get Commissioners Saddlely and Cluott back in here. Is there going to be anybody left? Folks, I'd like to ask y'all, if y'all would, to kind of keep the noise down. We still have a meeting going on. Item nine, public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council for the following amendment to the subdivision regulation ordinance, 9A 17-4092, the appeal procedure. Well, let's see. Well, we'll have to wait. Once again, we don't have a quorum. I don't know what to tell you.
Pick responsibility for the first time. I was choking.
All right, well, we got a quorum, once again. So I'll reread the agenda item for the record. Item nine, public hearing to recommend approval or denial to the parish council for the following amendment to subdivision regulations ordinance, 9A 17-4092, the appeal procedure. All right, commissioners, as you know, this is a revision to our appeals procedure. You've had a month to review it. Comments or questions at this time?
Yeah, I have a, my issue with this is that it seems like it's an awfully cumbersome and punitive process. If an applicant comes before us and we take action on the matter and, for whatever reason, we choose to deny it, I think that the right and prudent thing to do is for them to take it before another body and appeal. I think if I'm reading this correctly, you know, the applicant would then be by code required to make an application, come before us, have us vote on the merits of the application, only to have them then come back to us for another hearing, which, most projects in today's day couldn't sustain that kind of a delay economically. They would simply lose their financing, and the project would just die on those merits. So I think this is awfully cumbersome. It's awfully burdensome on any applicant to do so. We've had a chance. We've had an opportunity. We've heard the merits of the application. We've heard the testimony that was presented before us. And it needs to be simplified and streamlined, so if he comes and he's denied, that he should go directly to the appeals board. And with that, I'd like to offer some amended language for you to consider.
Well, Mr. Dumas?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question in regards to his.
Well, we may have the same questions because actually I think it's inappropriate, Mr. Dumas, for you to be introducing this revision tonight. This is something, once again, Mr. Dumas, this is some discussion that should have taken place on a subcommittee level. And if I'm not mistaken, you do sit on the subdivision ordinance committee? And you had the opportunity to bring this up in front of that subcommittee and discuss this now?
And I haven't been able to attend for a variety of other personal reasons, so there you have it.
Well, okay, I have it. And based on the actions of this commission tonight, obviously, it, you know, really, it doesn't matter what we approve because the commission's going to go ahead and do whatever it, you know, just play it by ear when it comes to an appeal. So, you know, the commission can go ahead and they can look at what you've submitted, but what was, what we're looking at voting on is what was submitted last month.
That's fine, and just, you know, just include it in the record. I'm just submitting it as a revised language.
I don't even know if it's appropriate to put it in the record, Mr. Dumas.
Well, I think it's been presented and discussed, and it is part of the record. I mean, if I bring it up and I present it, it's in the record, correct?
Yes. And even at a council level, you can amend it or any time up to adoption, so it would be appropriate to discuss. I mean, I'm in.
Thank you.
Mr. Barrow, was that your question?
Well, I was just going to ask, just, it seems like in this scenario that I'm just looking at here, it, the appeals board, like, for instance, tonight, under Mr. Dumas's proposal, the appeals board would have heard what we heard from the homeless house applicant.
Correct.
And we wouldn't have been involved beyond the initial application.
We did not.
And I don't, just trying to understand the difference between what you're talking about and what was proposed here.
What this recommends, my suggestion is, is that somebody would come before us. If they get denied, they would, they would then have a period of time of no later than 30 days after receipt of the written decision of the commission to file an appeal and go before the planning commission appeals board, where they would be heard. Instead of this circuitous route that would possibly take longer.
I think, remember back to that subcommittee meeting, maybe Mr. Cluott could remember that, where we were talking about that being an option, but, but the wording that we ended up with was, was what we have. You remember that, Mr. Cluott?
Yes, I do. And I think the committee, subcommittee, decided to put this on the side and do some reviews, and then it went, it came back the second or third time. I asked legal to look at it and come back the second time, and when it did, I did not chair it. Mr. Chairman Marshall chaired it, and I asked him to take the process of passing this through based on what the, what the subcommittee wanted to do or what it needed to do. And my position on this is the subcommittee presented this, and the subcommittee voted on it and decided to send it to the full commission. And my position on this is that anybody that had any kind of opposition against this should have been at the subcommittee and should have spoke for or against, but this is the document that we sent, that was sent to the, to the commission from the subcommittee, and I think this is it. I mean, we either, we either go act on this one, or again, we can just arbitrarily do whatever, whatever anybody wants. This is before the commission tonight to approve as the, as the appeal process is succeeded. And I don't think we need to be changing this right now. We don't need to be changing it. We had a chance to change this in the subcommittee, because if we're going to keep doing this, we're going to keep changing things that the, that the subcommittee gives to the commission to do, then why do we have a subcommittee? Why don't we just bring it to the full commission and get it over with? I don't feel like, I don't feel like giving my time up and chairing a subcommittee and something is voted on unanimously or even, and sending it to this commission, then we're going to start changing it up. Now, we either go start doing the right thing and doing all the, what we have, the laws and the procedures and the policies that we have, or, gentlemen, let's all go home. Let's all give it up and go home. We need to start doing what we have in writing and what we have laws. If they're not any good, I'm going to quote what our district attorney said. Just Friday, I met with him. He said, if the law is not no good, change it. Change it. If the law is not any good, well, gentlemen, this was sent from the subcommittee to this commission. We don't need to be changing any word of it, if and a but. I don't care anything in it. Let's either vote on this to adopt it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from commissioners?
I'm just merely exercising my rights to propose an amendment, that's all.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm exercising my right too. Mr. Dumas, I'm a little upset that we.
Please direct, please direct your comments to the chair.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little upset that where we have a subcommittee, and we start working on these rules and regulations and codes and everything, and all of a sudden, at any given time, we can start changing. Why do we have a subcommittee? I asked this commission, why do we have a subcommittee if people are supposed to attend it and want something to change something? And I know you have your rights, Mr. Dumas, Commissioner, Dumas, but this is over with. I'll make a motion if you want me to, Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Not yet. I haven't asked. We've got other, other commissioners may want to make some comments also. Any other comments or questions by commissioners? We'll go ahead and open this door. We'll go ahead and, you had something to say, Mr. Saddlely?
Well, Mr. Chairman, not to be picky, but you just directed Commissioner Cluott to direct a comment to the chair, but the commissioner that spoke before him actually asked the legal. but the Commissioner that spoke before him actually asked a legal opinion, which is expressly prohibited in our bylaws, that to get a legal opinion, it can only be sought from the Chair. So just in the interest of fair play, I would highly recommend, going forward, that we, as Mr. Cluott has just said, discontinue just running about willy-nilly on who gets to speak and who they get to speak to, et cetera, and I just make a sincere request that all the Commissioners, and the Chair included, start to try the best they can to follow not only our bylaws, but as our bylaws say, where they leave off, Roberts Rules of Order. I am tired of Commissioners who just speak out and say, "Legal?"
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? If not, then we'll open up the public hearing. Anyone wishing to come up and address the commission on this, please sign up, and you'll get your three minutes to speak.
Hi, gentlemen, Billy Aguilar. This thing potentially, the ordinance way, there's already appeal process in place for stuff that goes to the planning commission. It's already in ordinances. This thing can potentially delay a project for 120 days. As Mr. Dumas said, at these times and these economic conditions, these could kill some valuable economic projects. And if you guys deny it, and we have to come back to you to ask you for approval of something you already denied, well, we know the answer already, you're gonna deny it again. So we need to go to the next process within thirty days and get the project on the road. Let the council deny it, or let the approval, as it is now, there's an appeal board now that you can go to, that'll lead to approval or deny it now. Then it can go to the council. Let's leave the ordinance like it is now. Thank you.
Wait, Mr. Aguilar, I got a question for you. You just said if we deny it and it comes back for an appeal, we'll deny it again. How do you know we denied it again?
Well, you've already voted it down once. What's the reason you're gonna approve it again?
No, Mr. Aguilar, the applicant has the opportunity to correct the reasons that he was denied. And we have, we have gone through this process before. This has gone before. The applicant came back to us, submitted the application, says, "Here's what I've corrected, here's why I was denied, and I've corrected it." The commission voted and said, "Okay, we approve this application," put him on the next month's agenda. He came back and the commission approved him. Okay, it's gone through this process before.
And, Ms. Marchand, I agree with you.
Now, the problem we had was we denied somebody, next month, they showed up and just said, "Hey, I want you to rehear my project." No reason, nothing. Even had a developer come back in and say, "I want you to rehear my project." Didn't change. He didn't change anything. He was denied for several legitimate reasons in the code, and he didn't change anything. He was given an opportunity to come back, make his presentation. He made the same presentation that he made before, and he got denied again. He didn't even make an attempt to change anything or correct anything. He had an...when we denied him again, he could've went to the Board of Appeals. He chose not to, because finally it dawned on him, hey, I didn't correct what I was supposed to correct. It's simple.
Well, I agree with that. The Board of Appeals should deny him too. If he doesn't have everything that meets the code on it, it shouldn't be approved. I agree with that.
But the commission has the opportunity to go ahead and overrule its...
If the staff shouldn't send you something that all the staff comments hadn't been addressed and proved on the plans that the staff sent you. And I'm not saying the staff does everything 100% right, 'cause everybody makes mistakes, but to have to come back before this board again for an appeal is just... If it's a technical error, I'm 100% with you. But if you just deny a project because it's being denied because a bunch of people speak against it, then it ought to be able to go to the appeal process, as it is now. Thank you.
Mr. Cluott?
Mr. Chairman, I was not in the...we talking about appeals and we talking about changes and everything. I just witnessed, from sitting in this room over here, somebody appealed something, and the appeal was changed. In other words, the decision was changed. I don't think anything was wrong with it and everything. And so, to make a...to say that an applicant doesn't have this, in other words, to come back to this board, I think we do need him to appeal to come back to this board if there's changes like the Chairman is saying. In other words, if we denied the applicant, then you're saying he's going straight to appeals after the first denial? Uh, Mr. Aguilar?
That's the way the ordinance is today.
That ain't what we did today, that ain't what was done today.
The ordinance as it's wrote today says that if a person is denied on a planning issue, they can go to the appeal board today.
No, they can't.
No.
They gotta come back to us first.
Yes, sir.
Right now, they come back to us, and if we deny him a second time, then they go to the Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, I wanna make a motion. Get me going, get me started, let's get off of this.
Right now, we're not even out of the public comment period. Did anybody else sign...I didn't see anybody else, I'm not sure. Okay, then the public comment period, all this is closed.
Mr. Chairman?
Comments or questions from Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, oh, just for what Mr. Cluott just said, just to understand what this modification would be, the example of homeless house tonight would've been, we would've said, yes, we will hear the appeal, and it wouldn't be till next month that we would actually hear. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would be publicly noticed for a rehearing on the...
Because Mr. Cluott just said that what he thought went on tonight was right, yet what's on here is not what we did tonight, correct? Mr. Marchand?
No, no, sir. That's not what I meant.
Could you clarify, Mr. Cluott?
Yeah, no, what I was under the impression is that if we turn him down once, then he has...he can't appeal back to this board. What I had, when I left the room tonight, well, let me back up a little bit. When I looked at the agenda, when I first received this agenda over the email, I looked at this agenda and it says, "Pre-development meeting of historic overlay site plan for homeless house." In other words, it says, "Public hearing to approve or deny the following appeal of decision for the applicant, application." I'm under the impression that all this was, was this commission was being asked to appeal his application, to either deny or accept his application. I don't see where it was a public hearing on the actual homeless house itself, but I witnessed it tonight, and it was, so I'm gonna leave it alone. I'm not gonna go any further. I'm not gonna beat a dog to death. So this appeal makes it go twice, which then it does, if the second time is denied, am I correct, Mr. Chairman? He has a right to come back the second time if he's denied, and we can either change our decision or not, right?
If he's denied twice by the commission, then he goes to see the Board of Appeals.
That's what I'm talking about, but he comes here the second time.
He has to come to us twice.
That's what I meant, Commissioner.
Correct.
Right, but I still don't think you're understanding what Mr. Professor...Chairman Marchand, what he has on this document would not...what would happen, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, would not be what happened tonight, but they would vote on...we would vote tonight whether we wanna hear him next month. So, and that's where Commissioner Dumas here is saying that he thinks that's a little bit, you know, extending the process for the applicant, and that's what... I don't know about the 120 days, but it makes it a little bit longer process than it currently is.
Well, suppose this commission didn't wanna hear his appeal?
Then we would say we didn't want to, and then it would be...it would go to the...
It would go to the Board of Appeals. Okay.
Right. And that's what's going on, that is legal's interpretation of what we're doing. What we did tonight is what the... I would be in favor of sending it back to the subcommittee, and maybe Mr. Dumas could attend and chime in his perspective on what he has here. And I know that Mr. Cluott would maybe not agree with that, but I think there's definitely some confusion on our own committee that we had, and I think Mr. Marchand would agree that there was some confusion.
Any other comments or questions?
Quick question.
Quick question, okay, Mr. Compton, quick question.
If the application for appeal is denied, do they take that denial to the appeals board?
Yes, because that's the second denial on the part of this commission.
Okay, so when they go to the appeals board, they're not appealing the denial of the application, they're appealing the denial of the project.
That would constitute a second denial on the part of the commission.
Okay, so the language covers both second denials? That's...I'm just making sure that's the intent?
Yes. The problem we had was we had people just showing up saying, "Rehear my issue." Commission, okay, we'll vote, we'll go ahead and rehear it. We didn't rehear it that night, we reheard it the next month. That's when the issue with the application came. Well, why should we rehear it? The application, as you've seen the application, it explains. How have you been dealt unfairly by the commission? What did the commission do to you is wrong? How do you think the...based on what? It gives us some background information. The commission goes in and says, "Well, yeah, the guy's got a legitimate point." Okay, we'll vote, we'll have a...hold a rehearing. Then it's publicly noticed as a rehearing on the item. But you have to have it on the agenda where you have to review the application to determine whether or not it merits an actual rehearing of the item, of the issue itself. That's it. Mr. Nance, you had a comment you wanted to make?
You explained it. I hope up to your satisfaction.
That's what we've been going through, Steve, since you've been appointed, and I have. I mean, it's the process, it just, it went ahead, and all it did was, well, it added an application for us to get an explanation, and it added a fee. There was no fee being charged for a rehearing.
Yeah, I remember that.
We've got staff who's going ahead and making more copies and doing all this work for somebody who's gonna rehear something, and that costs money. So there was no fee attached to it. In fact, I don't know, has the fee been applied even to the Board of Adjustments? Yeah, I mean, there was...you just come and appeal anything you wanted, and you were good to go, just said, "I wanna appeal it." So that's all this did. That's all this is doing right here. But at the time, our legal counsel got on to us about this. Hey, you are...you are only hearing, deciding whether the application is valid or not, and the development of the issue itself has to be publicly noticed as holding a rehearing on the item. Any other comments or questions from Commissioners? What's the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Cluott?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this subdivision regulation ordinance and apply it.
Recommend sending it to the parish council?
Parish council, yes, sir.
Have a motion to recommend approving this to send it to the parish council by Milton Cluott?
Second.
Second by Dan Saddleley. Discussion?
Well, as I mentioned before, I think there's still some confusion on what this says versus what's going on now, so I would like to consider looking at this again in subcommittee.
Are you offering that as a substitute motion?
Sure.
Okay, I have a substitute motion by Stephen Barrow to send this back to the subcommittee for further consideration.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Julio Dumas. We'll go ahead and we'll vote on the substitute motion first, or first, is there any further discussion? Okay, then we'll vote on the substitute motion first. Mr. Barrow?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Nance?
No.
Mr. Cluott?
No.
Mr. Saddleley? No. Mr. Esnar? No. Motion fails. Now, we'll vote on the main motion, to send it forward to the parish council with approval to recommend. Mr. Barrow?
No.
Mr. Dumas?
No.
Mr. Nance?
Yes.
Mr. Cluott?
Yes.
Mr. Saddleley?
Yes.
Mr. Esnar?
Yes.
Motion passes. All right, item 10, committee reports, our subdivision ordinance subcommittee. Mr. Cluott?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Subdivision subcommittee ordinance did not have a meeting last month, and I was not able to get with Chairman Marchand of the previous month. And between now and Monday, I will be getting with Jeff, and we'll come up with an agenda. But right now, no, sir, we didn't act or do anything, and it looks like we need to start sharpening it up. We do, it looks like we sent this stuff from the subcommittee, and it looks like we're here now in this commission right now. We trying to send it all back. So I'm gonna make a suggestion that those that sit on this subcommittee, show up, then put your input in it, and we go vote on it, and when we send it here, we're not gonna sit here and debate it like we just got through debating one that come from us. Because if that's gonna continue happening, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we abort the subcommittee and let the full commission handle this. But I will have an agenda, and we will have a meeting next week at five at DPW. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cluott. Item 11, new business. Mr. Chairman?
Can I make a comment about the last Commissioner's comment? I personally continue to be concerned about the high degree of absenteeism by certain commissions at these, Commissioners at these subcommittee meetings. And I further feel that if you're gonna be absent 70, 80% of the time, and I could be wrong about this, I just don't like coming to a full body and then complaining and wanna change and add things. And so I would ask you again, as I think we've done in the past, and also ask you, where have we gotten on this? You had told Commissioners in the beginning, I remember distinctly, if you cannot serve on a subcommittee, I need to know that in writing. I believe you further said, one Commissioner said they couldn't, or no Commissioners said they couldn't, but yet we continue to have 70 and 80% absenteeism on some of these commissions. I like Mr. Cluott, I don't like wasting my time. So I'd ask you again, what are we doing about this?
At the end of the year, I'm hoping that the subcommittee chairman are going ahead and they are keeping records as far as the attendance. I've also told subcommittee chairman, if you are having issues with absenteeism, and send me the records, make me aware of it. We can...and I'll go ahead, I'll take the issue up with the Commissioners. And if they...all I can do is ask them if they, you know, what their intentions are. If their intentions are not to serve on the subcommittee, then I will remove them from the subcommittee. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Item 11, any items of new business to be brought up before the full commission? No. Item 12, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Bob Nance, seconded by Milton Cluott, to adjourn. Any opposition or discussion? We're adjourned for 10 minutes. We'll reconvene to zoning commission.